All right, thanks Paul. Okay, it's seven o'clock, we're going to call this meeting to order. Judy, would you like to take the role, please?
I would love to. Reed.
Here.
Stiles.
Here.
Tuzel.
Here.
And Jerry Sims is sitting in for Lori Askin, who's out of town. Tim Toby is away on a family matter. We also have at the table Amy Blankenship, who's here as village solicitor.
Welcome, Amy.
Thank you.
We have an agenda that was generated. If anyone is, everyone is okay with that, we'll stick to it. If you want to add something or detract from it, now's the time to do that. If not, then we can go right into the review of the minutes from the ninth of February. Hopefully, everyone's had a chance to review these.
Yes.
Is there anyone that has any comments on the first page? The second? The third? Fourth? Or the fifth? If not, can we have a motion to accept these minutes as is?
I move approval of the minutes.
Anyone second?
Second.
Thank you, Rose. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Jerry will abstain, since he wasn't, he were here, actually.
I was here.
Okay. Next item on the list is communications. I don't think we have any. Then we have citizens' comments, which is a time to, for anyone to address Planning Commission on any item that's not on the agenda. This is your moment. If there are none, you know, actually, I would like to make one amendment to the agenda here. And I was wondering, Jerry, could you, I wouldn't shock you with this or drop this on you, can you, for a couple of minutes, talk about the discussion you had with the trustees during your joint meeting about the Comprehensive Plan Action Group, or whatever you want to call it?
Okay. Let me think back. The, Richard Lepidi, a citizen, kind of brought up the notion, and John, you weren't there, were you?
I was, I was there.
Were you there, Judy?
I was, sir.
I was.
Okay. In any, any rate, he talked about the Comprehensive Plan, and there were items in the plan that he felt had been accomplished, but he also felt that there were some actions based on the plan that both the township and council should look at, and he suggested that we name someone to kind of spearhead that. Am I saying that correctly?
I'm sorry.
He kind of named, he kind of made reference that we needed someone to spearhead some of the items in the Comprehensive Plan. Unfortunately, neither town, neither a council member, council member stepped up to say that they would hunch away. So, it kind of fell back on Richard to say, well, maybe there might be a group of citizens and so forth that may want to take that on. So, we kind of left that in, in his court. If I'm correct, we really didn't get into a lot of discussion on the plan itself, other than the fact that some items had been completed, and there were some items left to be completed. So, that's, that's kind of how, but, but no direction came out of it for either council or township or plan to do anything at this point.
Okay.
There was, it's, he, I think, if I'm remembering the right discussion, was suggesting that that perhaps needed to be an outside group that was creating that effort, because both council and Planning Commission regularly bring aspects of the Comprehensive Plan into what it is that they do and the documents that they put together, but he was sort of feeling that an outside person could help to tie some of those elements together and work with the township trustees to kind of bridge the information gap. And then that was, in fact, better done by someone who was not seated on either of those.
Right. Okay, thanks. And the reason I brought it up is because in the plan, there's a, there's even a group that's, that's called out to be formed to kind of, and a series of established goals that are, I think it's 10 years, but, that was five years ago.
Right.
And some of those things have been accomplished, like the new zoning code and some other things. But, I would encourage you guys to do that. I mean, I think it's important. And, and if it means someone from this group, you know, being part of that body, then, I mean, I think that's appropriate as well. Okay. Sorry for that diversion.
No, that's all.
The next item on the list is a consent item for a lot split. Do you want to take the lead here on a quick description of?
Yeah, this is a consent item, which means that the Planning Commission does not need to take any action on it unless they feel the need to take action on, or discuss this. But, basically, the property at 1126 Livermore Street, which is owned by Samantha Eckenrode, she's proposing to divide the lot into three separate lots. And the criteria is listed in the requirements, that define that the proposed subdivision is located along an existing public road, involves an opening, widening or extension of any street or road or public utilities, that the proposed subdivision is not contrary to the applicable subdivision or zoning regulations, that no more than five lots be created following division of the original parcel, that attractive land post for minor subdivision has not been involved previously in minor subdivisions' approval during the last two years, and if here is unlikely to be further subdivided subsequently, the village has provided sufficient guarantee of necessary easements to the property owner, and the property owner specifically dedicated the same. Recording instrument has a notation stating that each buildable lot will be provided with separate and adequate water and sewage connecting laterals, and an approved record instrument has been prepared by a registered surveyor found in the minor subdivision, the same sketch of location subdivision bearings and distances along each lot line, and certificate that proper iron pins have been driven at each corner lot, each lot corner to delineate proper property boundaries, and that a copy of the recording instrument has been submitted to the Planning Commission by the zoning administrator at least 10 days prior to a regular scheduled Planning Commission meeting. If the Planning Commission takes no action at that meeting, the minor subdivision is deemed approved. I reviewed this, did the calculations in the chart that's on the back, the second page of the staff report, all of the proposed lots that would be split meet our zoning setback and lot area requirements for the R- A zoning designation. The properties in general primarily conform to the regulations. There's only one concern, that would be the tract three could be subdivided further, but only if the existing buildings are removed. So, at this time, it would, it could not be subdivided, but it does have this efficient amount of area and frontage to be divided in the future. Based on all this information, recommended that if the Planning Commission were to take this up as a discussion item, that they would, should approve the lot division with the findings for, that is in compliance with Section 1226.11A of the Village Code of Ordinances. Do you have any questions regarding my report?
I don't. In fact, as far as I understand, we don't need to take any action on this, is that correct?
That's correct.
I guess I would recommend to you folks that we don't do anything, just let John.
Okay.
I agree.
I do, I have a question. I don't see the certification of proper iron pins on the survey record. Am I just missing it?
This is just a general plat survey, but I could, I could ask the surveyor to see if they have those provided and have them on the.
If it's a requirement, then?
Mm-hmm.
But, I don't think we should take any action?
The pins are there, and marked with, or the paint, paint ribbon or flag on them.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, well, thanks, John. I guess we'll just move on, then.
Well.
Is that, do I need to?
Well, I have two questions. One is, it would seem that you'd need to do a motion to approve the consent items.
Yes.
And, and I have a further question, then, are the other items on the agenda, those were ones that you were going to bring a resolution for?
What's that?
If, if they're approved, that you were going to bring a resolution of approval?
Yes.
For each of those? And this is just consent by motion?
Yeah, consent is not a resolution. A map amendment, or text amendment, or approval for conditional use or something would.
Okay.
So, we need a motion, Judy, is what you're saying?
Correct.
And it's moving approval of the request.
You're moving approval of the consent agenda, of the consent item? Yes.
Okay, I move approval of the consent agenda.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Yeah, we probably, I think, is this our first time using, we probably should have explained the process before we.
Yeah, we don't really do the consent items very often, so.
And this is really the only time it comes up. When I looked at the regulations, it didn't even say it was a consent agenda, it said it has to go before the Planning Commission, and it can decide to take no action, so.
So, if we decide to take action, though, then what happens?
Then we would have a discussion about it.
Have a discussion, and then potentially have a public hearing?
Well, you would, you would, it would be the public hearing, this is, the consent agenda is on the.
Gotcha.
Is on, you would, basically, in Planning Commissions that have consent agendas, what happens is, let's say there's a list of five items, you say, oh, this, this lot split, I want to talk about this lot split, and you make, you make a motion to move 1126 Livermore out of the consent agenda for discussion, and then it's, and then it's brought out, and then, and then I would give my staff report on it, and then you guys would open up for, for discussion between yourselves and the public, and then have a decision on that.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
You know, we're all amateurs up here. Volunteers.
It's okay.
Okay, the next item is public hearing on the rezoning application for 104 Xenia Avenue. Typically, we'll have a discussion with staff, and then open up the public hearing, after comments, close that, and then have further discussion if necessary, and then, and then move on the application. So, John, do you want to start again?
Sure. This is the application for 15003 for the map amendments for 104 Xenia Avenue. The property, which is known as the Restaurant Peaches, was somehow zoned conservation when the zoning map was updated in 2013. However, the property has been utilized as a restaurant for over a decade. Staff identified and brought this conflict to, and then zoning code to the Planning Commission to initiate a rezoning effort. The Commission voted in its February 2015 meeting to zone the property, to begin that process of rezoning this from C conservation of gateway overlay to B1 central business with gateway overlay. Requirements are outlined in your staff report, Section 1280.02B, which say that the rezoning must be consistent with the goals, policies, and future land use map of the Yellow Springs Comprehensive Development Plan and Division Yellow Springs and Miami Township documents, or conditions have changed significantly since the plan was adopted, is consistent with recent development trends in the area, that it is compatible with the site's physical, geological, hydrological, and other environmental features, that is compatible with surrounding uses in terms of lands, the sustainability, impacts on the community, density, potential influence on property values and traffic impacts can be accommodated on the subject property considering existing planned infrastructure including roads, sanders, sewers, storm sewer, water sidewalks, and light, road lighting, and does not result in a spot zone. Planning Commission is making a recommendation to council on this one, so you can make a recommendation to approve, deny, or attach conditions to the, to the recommendation. Staff looked at this and found that the proposal meets the requirements of Section 1280.02B, that is, existing commercial establishment is not a park, is not planned to be a park in either the Comprehensive Plan or Division Plan for Miami Township and Yellow Springs. And finally, this is not a spot zone, as it would just add to the existing B1 zone that's adjacent to the property. So, basically, just looking at the adopted zoning map from 2013, and once we get GIS, we'll update this, because we have a couple of discrepancies, such as A88 Dayton is now a PUD, and a few other things. But, if you look at this little subset in downtown, it's very hard to kind of see where the streets are here, they didn't name all the streets, and if you see really closely on Dayton Street where it bends here, it looks like they drew a line in GIS, and then overlaid it, they thickened it, which is, you can draw a line, you draw a very thick line to highlight that road, so, this is the bike trail, and I have the assumption that maybe they were looking at this and seeing, maybe thinking this was the train station, which is actually over here, where this line is. But, you can't really tell, because they put the line over it. So, I think that's where it kind of happened. I looked at the online GIS, and I matched all the parcels together to make sure I wasn't hallucinating. So, it did turn out that indeed, this was a mistake, apparently, on the zoning map, so that's how that happened. But, I figured I'd show you some background as to how I found that on the map. So, do you guys have any questions for, for me?
Thanks. Questions for John? Okay, any further discussion here? If not, we'll open a public hearing. Open a public hearing, anyone has any comments about this item, feel free to come up and state them in the microphone, identify yourself. Looks like it's not a very controversial item. If there's no comments, I'll close the hearing. Any further discussion?
I have a question. Did we have to, like, put up a sign or anything for this?
Because the village initiated the request, we're not, we're not governed by the same regulations as a general applicant for property owner.
Okay.
But, we did notify all the property owners and adjoining property owners, and everyone within about 100 feet of the property. So, we went above and beyond with that scope.
Okay. Anything else for us?
No.
We're good? Do we have a motion? Do we want to move that?
The motion to recommend to council to approve this change in zoning code. I move to recommend this change in the zoning code.
Okay. Second?
I second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
For clarification purposes, that is a motion to rezone 104 Xenia Avenue from C-1 conservation with gateway overlay district to B1 central business with gateway overlay district. Is that correct?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
You got that, Judy?
The last part you swallowed there, John. Gateway to B1.
Central business with a gateway overlay district.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is the right-of-way vacation request from the college for Herman Street.
1504?
1505, I think. Is that right?
Okay. Yeah.
John, do you want to start over again, and?
Sure, yeah, and these are kind of out of order, I, submission to the, to the agenda. I apologize for that.
I got it flipped.
So, this is application 15-05 for a right-of-way vacation request from Hanyak College. They are requesting to the village to vacate a right-of-way, the eastern portion of Herman Street, portion is located at the turnaround, east, excuse me, east of the turnaround on Herman, and then extends a length of about 1,022 feet to Corey Street. It is 25 feet wide. The street is a paper street, and the proposal was heard on December 8th, 2014, however, the Planning Commission cited table the application. The street is located in D1 Educational Institution District. The requirements for a right-of-way vacation are outlined in Section 1224.02B of the Village Code of Ordinances. They are, the relationship between the proposed action, oh, sorry, that the vacation could go forward, the relationship between the proposed, after reviewing, the relationship between the proposed action and the Yellow Springs Comprehensive Development Plan, the staff recommendations concerning such things as present land use, adjacent property access, utility easement, transportation needs, the validity of the applicant's reasons for requesting the vacation, general citizen reaction to the proposed vacation, and abutting property owner support or lack thereof for the proposed vacation. So, those are the items that the Planning Commission should consider in evaluating the right-of-way vacation. The Planning Commission make a recommendation to approve, deny, or have conditional approval to the village council regarding the right-of-way vacation request. The village council will ultimately approve, or deny, or approve of conditions, the request. I went through the list here and outlined what staff concerns were. As far as connection, relationship with the Comprehensive Plan, the right-of-way is not identified in the plan as a connector for automobile traffic in the village's Comprehensive Plan. Two, staff recommendations concerning present land use, adjacent property access, utility easements, and transportation needs. Present land use, historically, this area, it used to be the location of the college golf course, and it was, and now it is currently, adjoining land is utilized by the college as part of its farming operation, and also solar array field. Adjacent property access, adjacent property is currently accessed by the cul-de-sac at the end of the maintained portion of Herman. And, as far as utility easements, we, I consulted with department heads at Miami, utility department heads, and the Miami Township Fire and Department, and I summarized their responses. The fire department is concerned about maintaining the turnaround at the end of Herman Street, which appears to be partly in this area, so, that could be something that could be ironed out with a vacation to show that the village would have right-of-way there, that wouldn't be on college land. Water and electric department identified a four-inch main water line running behind President Street, which is, would be right, if you can see the mouse cursor a little bit, I don't have my laser pointer with me, it was right back here, these properties along President Street have a water main running behind them. And then there's also a water line going down the, the street as well, the paper street.
John, that's a sanitary.
Oh, sanitary, sorry. And, his concern is that there is a, if the farm moves forward, if it will raise the elevation of, of the land where there's a existing water, existing water line. So, he is saying, and I apologize, Jason and Johnny could not be here tonight, they had some stuff come up. But, they identified that they need to have a certain amount of ground depth for the, for the water main in order to be able to access it, and if you add more to that, it would bring those water mains out of compliance. So, that was one of the concerns that was raised by Johnny's department. The, the other sewer adjacent, the existing sanitary sewer main runs within the adjacent, within the undeveloped Herman Street right-of-way, connects to the sanitary sewer main in Corey, which is around here. He's concerned that, over whether or not the runoff from the farm would meet standards by the Environmental Protection Agency, and he contacted and looked into that, and they don't have a very clear length or setback with for what a farm use would be from, from a runoff, but they, instead, that it needs to be something that can't get into the storm sewer as much. So, he was concerned about meeting that requirement, and then also, he would need fencing to be at least 10 feet from the manhole in the middle of the right-of-way access if there is fencing. Basically, he needs to have five feet on each side of the sewer main in order to do maintenance work. And then finally, he's also concerned about the possibility of east-west access from Corey to the rest of the village. This is also highlighted in the report that Jason submitted to you guys in the packet, and this is part of the December report as well. And then Johnny's requests are, his concerns are also outlined in the attached document from December. But, those are kind of some updates on that. And then finally, the transportation needs, the right-of-way has never been utilized as a street. A majority of it is about 25 feet in width, which is too narrow to be utilized as a street according to our subdivision regulations. However, it could be utilized as a bicycle pedestrian path in the future, if the village chooses to do that, and hold on to the right-of-way. Concerning the validity of the applicant's reasons for requesting the vacation, the applicant stated they intend to expand their farm garden and solar array onto the sites, and the plans that I believe Reggie has on the boards and I have up here are kind of illustrate some of that, and I believe we'll be talking about that in a bit. And then, as far as general citizen reaction to the proposed vacation, residents came to the 2014, December meet, 2014 meeting, and spoke, voicing concern about nearby property owners have not been identified for the meeting, which is why we took a step back and noticed the entire block for this meeting, as well as we went above the minimum requirements for the.
Notice Herman Street up to Livermore?
Up to Livermore, yes.
Okay.
And then finally, support or lack thereof from adjacent property owners. Actually, this is why I just said we mailed to Livermore, just basically says the same thing. So, I looked at this and talked to the utilities. We still have some outstanding concerns regarding the utilities with, running within the existing right-of-way, and then there's potential for environmental concern that we need to clear up if the farm use were to move forward, or actually, the existing farm use, how that ties into the village sanitary sewer line. So, with that information, at this time, staff recommends that the Planning Commission recommend that the village council not approve the right-of-way vacation with the following findings, and that, that are, is vacating the right-of-way would not allow sufficient access to existing village utilities, and that long-term plans presented by the applicant may conflict with utility performance and maintain, maintenance in the right-of-way. I recommend that the applicant present their farm use expansion to, which is outlined in the college master plan, along with an application for the right-of-way expansion in the future, and also consult with our utility departments and reach an agreement on the maintenance of the existing utilities on the paper street before moving forward on the alley, on the street vacation. In the event that these things cannot work, we are interested in working with the college to explore other ways to incorporate a non-vacated Herman into their master plan. Do you have any questions for our panelists?
I have one. You mentioned that storm sewer, is there a storm sewer there as well?
There is a storm sewer here on Corey, and then there's a, kind of a runoff ditch, and it's in the picture that I have in this report, and it is the.
But, that runs through the, the south solar array.
Yeah. So, Jason has, I went down and took pictures, Jason identified that that was the ditch, so, so that runs down Corey.
So, there's not a catch basin for storm sewer, though, anywhere in there, in that?
To my knowledge, I don't, I'm not, I don't believe so, but.
There's a natural swale that runs across South Campus.
Yeah.
The storm sewer is running parallel with Corey Street.
Yeah, okay.
And then, water from that storm dumps into Glenn, as you probably know.
But, the swale, the natural swale is, is at the terminus of a sewer, of a sewer plant. And so, that runs the length of Livermore, excuse me, down east Herman, rather.
Right.
Terminates at that junction, turns into the swell. So, do you see where the map point to where that is, or do you care?
Well, John, you could point it out, you know where it is, the swale.
Swale?
For the storm water, even, you can see it on the contours.
It's right here. See right here?
Right. And then it goes south through the south array.
Yes. And then it ties in around here.
That low spot where that tree is.
So, that's a swale, and, and see how the grazing is here, so that would be where the water would run off into the swale into the storm water sewer, right there.
Yeah, okay.
So, his concern is that stuff that is, you know, would jeopardize compliance with EPA from the grazing is coming down the swale into the, into the storm sewer.
Now, is there, I was out there today, and I followed the swale to a point along the side of the solar panels. Now, I didn't see any connection at that point to a storm sewer, so are we saying that the storm sewer is on the other side toward Corey?
Yeah, it's on, it's on Corey. It's like right around here.
Are you talking about a catch basin?
There's a, there should be a catch basin there, I think. There's a, there should be a catch basin there, I think.
I, I think it's just a culvert under the road.
If I recall.
That's what I was trying to determine because, because I saw a lot of ponding where the swale kind of stopped. So I was wondering where the water went from that point.
Yeah, I think there's a little corrugated culvert that goes under Corey to, and in fact, on the bike path, there's a heavy wood, kind of like rail. Where it drops into the Glen.
Yeah, I could see that, the bike path, but I was just wondering how the water got from that swale to.
The way it ponds, I think it's clogged up.
Actually, I, I had my boots on, so I couldn't get in there and see, but.
In technology, right?
Scary.
There's no solar field here, what's up with that?
Wait for an update in June.
Yeah, go to right, right there somewhere, right there.
There, that's.
See the culvert right there?
Yeah, I found that, but I saw no way, you know, that's like you say, it is a corrugated.
So if you go over and look at the bike path.
This is the bike path.
This is the winds park.
Goes under, yeah.
Yeah, it goes under the bike path.
Goes under here. So that, that is our storm, storm construction there.
Can you, can you pull up the cul-de-sac on Herman Street?
On Shreveau?
Yeah.
Didn't like that.
I don't think so.
This is the cul-de-sac on Herman.
Right, okay, so as you, you walk out and it, and the swale is kind of to the right if I'm correct, okay?
Yeah.
And the water drains toward the solar array. Now, do we know if, if there's some type of drainage piping or that the village is concerned about at that point? Or are we just?
It's the sanitary line.
Yeah.
The sanitary infrastructure runs through the Herman. So that's, and this says, Jason Hamby says that there was an understanding that the village would not be putting back any fencing or materially, materials located closely to our said sanitary mains. Maybe the college would not be putting.
The sanitary goes right down between the solar arrays right now.
So if, if we vacated Herman Street, the fencing, if there's, if there's solar panels going in there, there would be fencing that would restrict our workers from accessing the sanitary lines. Is that the issue?
That's the issue, yes. They want to be able to have clear access to the san, sanitary lines if they need to replace them or repair them in any way.
Okay, let's continue this discussion with Reggie, do you want to say some things about this particular?
And Reggie, if you want to, if you want to use those boards, you could. Well, I like, I like what you had, I wouldn't have brought those things if I'd known you were going to throw that out, that's awesome.
I got this one and I got.
We've never had that capability before, so.
I got the other one. So I'll pull the other one up to the five-year plan and.
So yeah, so let's look at that one.
Fit the page. Which might make them a bit smaller than I like. Is that okay or?
Okay, well, bring in Herman Street a little closer, maybe blow that up and center it. No, that's good.
Herman right here.
All right. Okay, so the turnaround, that can remain, you know, but that, that doesn't pose any problems for us. And I talked to Johnny and Jason both regarding this street vacation. And Jason's concern was that sanitary line that basically comes off Herman and goes in between the two solar arrays. And maintaining an easement of 10 feet, which is five feet to either side, that's completely doable for us. He was also concerned about fencing coming across it. And what, what I thought we would do is where that sanitary runs through, we have gates. We could work it out with the village that they would have keys to those gates. So if they ever needed to get in there, because his concern is there was a breach in that line and they had to get to it quickly. They want to be able to get there without having to run down somebody from the college and, and get a key or, or tear up fence to get at it. So I think that by doing that, that would address a lot of Jason's concerns about that sanitary line.
Did Jason, oh, sorry, oh, sorry.
So, and, and the other point I wanted to make was that, you know, by having a street there, it's, we're having to honor these setbacks for imaginary buildings that might be placed there. Well, it's going to be a farm. So it doesn't make sense to honor these 25 feet setbacks from, from that street right of way. So I'm suggesting we just, we maintain an easement for the sanitary line, you keep the turnaround. We put gates where they're, where it crosses the sanitary line so that there is easy access. I would agree with the thought of, it, it doesn't sound like you'd ever want to build a street there. And we certainly wouldn't want to see cars start coming across campus that way. So if nothing else, you know, vacate the street and we could still, I mean, we would, we like the idea of pedestrian walkway through there or paths. We want the campus to become a bike and pedestrian friendly campus. So we could work with those type of things. I don't, I don't really see the tie-in as far as farm runoff to vacating the street. Whether we have a farm or we don't have a farm, I mean, that, that problem's going to exist no matter whether there's a street right of way or there's a sanitary easement.
Where, where would the gates be? I guess I'm trying to visualize where they are.
So the sanitary line, I'm not sure exactly where, it comes off Herman, somewhere in this area. And it, and it runs straight across like this, it gets real close to this fence here and then it kind of cuts across this, through this line.
So right now, the two arrays have separate fencing around them.
So you can see where they draw on fencing, but a gate could be put there, a gate could be put there. There's no fencing there, this shows, that's open.
Okay, but there, there is a fence around the solar array on both sides.
Yeah.
Correct?
Not, well, not where the right, right of way is.
No, 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 I'm talking about.
But, but around each array, yeah, there's a perimeter fence around both arrays.
And as you picture there, that's going to be a rotational grazing area, okay? And are you proposing to fence that area in for livestock?
Yes.
And then have a gate so.
Is that the five-year plan or the short term?
It's the 2014.
Yeah, the five, can we put it for five-year plan? Because the five-year plan is, the garden actually comes out into Herman. And actually, that's the first phase of the farm expansion is really the garden expansion. Which I know, yeah, see now the garden's out there where the Herman Street, right?
Is the.
So the rotational pens are going to be moved further down.
So the, the livestock actually moves further, it does, it's not going to stay in that same spot?
Right, correct.
So, so the ducks and chickens and so forth that are there now, are they on the right of way?
At times, I think it is, but it's movable and they move it quite often.
Okay, so the, the fence with the gate that you're proposing, is that going to be a movable fence? Or is that?
No, that, so once we expand the garden, that fence will go around the garden to protect the vegetables that we grow there from deer and other animals that might want to get in there and eat our food.
So, so is your future plan to, for that always to be a garden?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
And not?
Not animal pens.
Okay, so then.
So the rest of that area, south of that, and if you notice over by Corey, will be set up with rotational pens.
Okay, so, so conceivably, if the village had to go in there, they could damage what's been planted.
Yeah, and we assume that risk. We understand that.
If this is approved, would you like fill in the 25 foot area between the two solar panel areas?
Well, we'd like, we'd like an option, I mean, if we can gain back some land there and if more solar became available, I know it's not available now, but down the road as the village power consumption grows, more solar could become available. And we could add a row or two if the, you know, if the street right, if the street right of way is vacated. Because again, that's 50 feet between the two arrays.
So you would be able to add like another row on each side or something like that?
Right.
On each side or, or, well, if we vacated it, I think you said that you would still maintain the easement over.
Yeah, and we wouldn't, of course, build any array over the, that easement.
Okay, so in, in that case, then the fence would go away, right? The fence that would be going around the garden would go away if you turn that into an array? And it would be the, the same path as we see in the present array?
Well, really only, the only thing that happened there Gerald is that we could move, we could probably add a couple of rows in closer to that sanitary line with fence there still. And still be far enough away to either side of that sanitary line.
We wouldn't be, we wouldn't be putting, when you mentioned the gardens, there wouldn't be any solar over here. I'm just talking about adding, adding a row there and there.
What you're envisioning if it was, if, if we vacated the, the right of way, you would drop it from the 25 feet or whatever it is down to a smaller.
Right.
So currently, the fences are 50 feet apart or 25 feet apart?
They're 50 feet apart.
Okay.
The two arrays are 50 feet apart.
The fences?
Yeah.
That meets the.
And that's because of the what, 15 feet?
That's because of the street.
What's the setback is, what, 15 or?
That was like 25 feet to either side.
Okay.
Of the center line.
Right.
Okay. Any more questions for Reggie? Thanks. Any more discussion here, or do you want to open the public hearing and then come back to discussion?
Sure.
Yeah, that's.
Okay, let's open the public hearing. If anyone has comments on this item, come up and address the microphone, please identify yourself for the folks.
I'm Mike Kelly, I live at the end of Kurt Street there. Reggie and I have talked a lot over the last year or two about the plans on the golf course. I guess I have two questions. I don't understand why the village would give the college this opportunity to vacate the, the right of way. I haven't heard any reason why we should do that. And along those lines, I currently walk through that right of way to get to the Glen at least once a week. So I'm not sure, this is, looks like it's going to cut off villagers' access to, to the Glen and to the bike path.
Okay, thanks. Anyone else?
Jerry Papadina, I just have a question. Right now with that easement, that gives the opportunity to put additional utilities in there. And if the easement is granted and narrowed, then could additional utilities be put in that easement in the future? If, if the need arises?
I would believe so. Are you talking about, how wide of an easement are you talking? It would be a 10-foot wide easement, five on each side of the, the main.
But it's sanitary, don't you have to put things far away from sanitary lines?
You can't put a water line to a sanitary, but you can run electric. And there'd be plenty of space to run electric if you needed to run underground for whatever reason. Can't imagine why the village would.
But there is space now to run, to run a water line through there, right? Being that it's 50 feet.
Well, it's 25 feet wide, but the setback is 50 feet because of.
Yeah, so, so, so the way it is now, a water line could be.
You could put some other, you can put any other line you want to maybe find in there.
Now, bring it down to 10 feet, could we still get our equipment in there?
Jason indicated that the 10 feet is the minimum he would need to get his equipment in there. Seems narrow.
Oh, we'll put a big enough gate for equipment.
All right.
I mean, that's really the only thing it needed to get through.
Reggie, did you talk to Jason about the gates? Is that something that you?
No, it's actually something I thought of afterward.
Okay.
About that.
Before we get off track here, anyone else have any comments, please?
Hello, my name is Ryan Pearson, I live at 1120 President Street. If I could point, I'd show you where that is, but it's immediately adjacent to the turnaround there in the south side. I, my plaintiff plea remains what it usually is, just kind of based on where we are with past behavior. If you have expectations, I request that you consider legislating them and getting them into the motion. If there are opportunities for, well, maybe this, maybe that, maybe this, then that just leads for the possibility of outcomes that you didn't anticipate and/or require or expect. So I would just ask you to, to consider that. Discretionary legislation may not be the appropriate avenue here. Other than that, I have no objection to the, to the easement, to the vacating the, right of way that is. And certainly have no objection to the village maintaining an easement if there are necessary services there. I may be missing something, but that's where it is at this point. I, I reached out to my neighbor, I don't know if you were successful in, in getting ahold of the Rothmans there in Israel. And Jay indicated that he would like to stand with no comment, so thank you very much.
Thanks for having me. Anyone else?
Paul Avandros. On Ziggie Avenue between Allen Street and Limestone is eight or nine blocks. There are no opportunities to get to Corey Street in that distance. And this picture, we see a road crossing what we call golf course. If that were to be a publicly accessible road rather than a private one, that would open up the possibility to travel from Ziggie Avenue to Corey Street in that eight or nine block area. So if that is attractive, you might want to make that a condition of this and the next request, thank you.
Thanks, Paul. Anyone else? Okay, with that, I'll close the hearing.
Yes. So regarding access, public access to that area, I mean, we do plan to have pedestrian walkways to get you from one side to the other. If the barn ends up getting approved and built, the road that Paul just mentioned would be a service road for the farm and the farm workers. It would not be intended as a, a public access road. But again, and as you can see drawn into some of the plans there, there's Pollinator Path running north and south. They'll be crossing paths to get you from, you know, Herman over to Corey and paths to get you from Allen across South Campus. I mean, that, our intent is to make it pedestrian friendly. We want to encourage people to come visit the farm, walk through the farm, see the animals if we're able to get. see the animals, if we're able to get some, and view the array and view our gardens.
So your vision for this road, is that going to be gated at Cory Street and/or?
We would gate it, yeah. We would want to restrict access.
What?
It would be a compacted gravel road.
Would that be something that could be open for fire department and?
It, I mean, it could be, sure. If fire department needed access through that way, I guess.
Okay.
Reggie, I was talking about the road at the top of the picture.
By the theater.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I'm sorry. Yeah, I'm not quite sure if that's going to be a paved road or, you know, that's, that, right now, it's a dirt trail. You know, it's kind of worn itself because our farm staff has driven around that area quite a bit. But I'm thinking that would still be a compacted gravel drive. Not sure, but again, our, our goal would be to make it accessible by the public and encourage the public to visit the farm.
Okay, thanks. Any more questions for Reggie or John? Any discussion?
Well, I guess, you know, Reggie did mention a couple of things that he hadn't discussed with, with Jason. One being the fence with the gate, I think you said, you know, you hadn't discussed that with them. The, I, I, I still have a little concern about the turnaround at the end of Herman Street, which is small now. And if the fire department would get any larger trucks, they can't make that turnaround. Which would say that the turnaround would have to be expanded for them to be able to do that, you know, a larger tanker, or even if they decide to go with a ladder truck. A ladder truck with the hose attachment won't, won't make that present turnaround.
But that's true right now.
Well, the present equipment, they have some concern, but I think they can make the turnaround. But it, it, future equipment.
How does that impact whether or not we vacate the paper road? I'm just curious.
Well, that's because the turnaround would have to be expanded to accommodate.
Either way, right?
Yeah, but if, if I don't vacate it, I, I don't have that issue.
Can I just comment on the issue? If the street is vacated, because currently the part of the turnaround is on the vacated street, and the other part of it is actually on Antioch College property.
Correct.
So what would happen is if we wanted to make improvements for the turnarounds, we would have to purchase the right-of-way from Antioch to get the needed space from that.
With the current configuration?
The current configuration's grandfathered, so it would work, but if we wanted to expand it, we would have to fix all that.
But even without vacating it, we would still have to do that? For part of it?
For part of it, yes.
For part of it, yeah.
Yeah, okay. So, so John, I just have a question for you. After all this discussion, you know, your recommendation was to disapprove of this. Do you still maintain that, or do you think this is something that can be approved with some thought out and conditions that, you know, hold the college to some of these things that we're talking about here tonight?
Yeah, I saw a lot of concerns presented from our utility departments, which is part of the reason why, the main reason why I recommend disapproval. After hearing testimony from tonight, I do see an avenue for approval if the commission were to move in that, that direction. One would be that they would have to maintain the turnaround access. The other one would be to, they would have to maintain a 10-foot easement for the sanitary line. The third would be that it would maintain the easement for an access for the water mine, water line that runs behind President Street. The one sticking point that I have is the notion of the gates. And if Mr. Hamby and his crew are okay with that, then, then that is something that we could bring back as, as a, as an agreement. But I, I'm not sure if they would, if that would comply with their policies and regulations.
So is this something that we could ask Antioch to come back with, in writing, what their recommendations are, and have an opportunity to have the village staff review it? And work it out so that we could either, we could approve it?
You could, you could, ultimately, this is a village council action, so you could.
So we're making a recommendation?
Well, one, one possibility would be is you would make an approval with the conditions that I listed as, as well as exploring the possibility of using gates and coming with a, an agreement to village council. Or you can table it and have them present the, that agreement to you guys. So that would be tabled and then brought back the next.
So we can continue this hearing next month?
Yes, if you can continue.
So we can hear from Jason. Jason can talk to Reggie about the gates. And then we're dragging this out for Reggie.
Yeah, it, it seems like it would be nice to have that understanding.
We can work that out in the interim and then bring it back to you guys in May.
If, if you're going to do that, I'd, I'd want the village to be specific on their EPA concern. Either there is or there is not a concern on the farm runoff. I'd like the village to be specific on not 10 feet as a minimum.
Right.
Specify how many feet they need.
Yeah, is it 10 feet or 15?
Yeah, you know, because, you know, you know, I'd like that to be specific, both for the village and both for Antioch. So they, so they know where they, you know, someone has to come back later and say, well, you know, now we've got an 11-foot wide truck, we can't get there.
Right.
You know what I mean? And, and the issue, they, they still say there's no clear way to access, let's see. I guess the President Street right-of-way. They say there's no, there's no clear way to access this if the right-of-way is vacated, and.
I think they may be talking about the other one, the northern.
So, so that's a misprint on here?
There are three President Streets.
Right, yeah, there's President Streets right, right over there. And there's a water main right behind those properties. But not exactly sure clear as to where it is on this map. It actually is in the report, though, so I'll pull that up.
Yeah, so that, you know, that, that's another concern that I have, you know. Like Paul says, there are three President Streets.
I don't know what was meant by access to President.
Yeah, I don't either.
So if that's, if that's not an issue, then, you know, but if it is an issue, it has to be addressed. Because they talk about adding topsoil, which imperative villages, abilities to have access to that, to those lines, so.
Um, I'm, I would just like to hear back, I guess, about whether or not, you know, state, having some language that said something like, at any point that a gate, that a fence is crossing the easement, that there be a gate of this size there. So that, you know, if there's two areas that are fenced out, there would be, you know, four gates all along that easement. I think that would be the, the minimum number of gates that, you know, we would need, but.
Well, I would need to check with Jason to see how the gates.
Yeah, obviously, that's just my thoughts on it, so.
So, so to kind of go back through some of these items. So it sounds like we're thinking about maybe continuing this hearing next month. And in that interim, we want Reggie and Jason to work out the gates? We want to talk about the filling, all the easement, because that's another one of Jason's concerns. We have the question about Ohio EPA runoff with respect to the storm, and whether that's even related to this because of the swale versus the easement. Four, the cul-de-sac, and five, the easement width.
I'm sorry, what was it regarding the cul-de-sac?
Just the, that it stays and kind of identifying its current dimensions, I guess. Is there anything else that?
Did you, did you mention this President Street issue?
I'm not sure what that issue is.
Yeah.
Is that in?
Let's see, in responding to summary, the fire department, Dennis said, warren, four-inch line that runs behind President Street right-of-way.
Oh, I see.
There's no way to access if the right-of-way is vacated.
So does President Street right-of-way extend through the golf course? Behind the homes on?
But not, well, okay, but not through Antioch property. There's water and sewer line that runs. Actually, right-of-way is on, right-of-way is not on to that venture.
So there's an easement, so it's a street right-of-way?
Run in north and south, yes.
I don't see the right-of-way on GIS map.
I don't think it's on there.
And I, I have a drawing with the electric, with the water line on it. I'm just, I'm looking for it in this file.
So what is the fire department proposing? Because there's no access now.
No, 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 it's, I think it's the village is saying that if they vacate it, they can't get to this water.
Access to the utilities that are there currently. But it sounds like they can, they can, yeah, they'll, we will, we're not vacating that. As long as it intersects Herman.
That's what I wanted to clarify.
Yeah, yeah, okay, okay.
So there's no, there's no question as to what it is.
So, to clarify your clarification, are you saying that the fire department is, has a concern that if you vacate that alley, the Herman Street alley, they won't have full access to the President Street?
No, it's water and electric. There's a four-inch water main, water line running behind President Street right-of-way. There's no clear way to access this if the right-of-way is vacated.
Right.
But are they talking about the President?
No, no, it's the Herman Street right-of-way, because they intersect, correct?
So you see where the Bluebird Trail is? That, that, I think that easement runs straight north and south through there. Is that correct?
Those signature work trees you see there are right on top of the centerline of President Street. So the, the kiosk, geothermal kiosk is the east end of President Street. The residential property line is the west end of President Street.
Yeah, yeah, got it.
Yeah, okay.
But that connects to the turnaround, not farther down?
Yeah, so if you maintain the cul-de-sac, you should be okay there.
Yeah, and just incidentally, the college agreed to 100 feet buffer when you approved the solar array off of that, off of the property.
Right, right. Okay. John, do you understand the issues that need to be worked through with Reggie?
I'd like to review what we have here. You've asked to come back with more specific identification of the concern for Environmental Protection Agency. Would be more specific about the minimums needed for the sanitary sewer line and reach an agreement on the access gates. And also to identify the cul-de-sac and how, what the future plans are for that. Is there anything?
Anything else that we want on the list?
I, I still, still like it to be specific about this President Street right-of-way.
What you?
The President Street right-of-way.
And we're interested in government to make sure there's access.
Can do that.
And then Judy, do we need a motion to continue this hearing next month?
You will, if you're tabling it, yes.
Okay.
Motion to table.
If there's any further discussion on this, or do you want to move on?
I motion to table this discussion until next meeting.
Okay.
Is that a proper?
Second?
You want to take the roll, Judy?
You can do it by voice, but I can call the roll if you, so let's just call that roll. Reed?
Yes.
Stiles?
Yes.
Helsa?
Yes.
Andrew Sims?
Yes.
Okay. The next item on the list is the request by the college to vacate a section of East North College Street right-of-way. John, do you want to start over?
I'll start this up again. Sure. This is application 15-004 for right-of-way vacation of East North College Street by Antioch College. The college has requested the village to vacate part of the right-of-way eastern portion of North College Street. This portion is located between Livermore and Cory Street at 66 feet in width. It's 100, excuse me, 1,036 feet in length. The street has been closed from automobile traffic for decades. However, fire access for the existing buildings located along the streets. Proposal was heard on December 8th, 2014. However, the planning commission decided to table the application. Also located in E1 Education Institution Zone District. Reviewed the requirements, they're the same from the last vacation, so I'm just going to go right into the findings. The right-of-way is not identified as a through street in, for automobile traffic and the village is comprehensive plan. It is currently utilized in, associated with the college. There is a walking path located along the north side of the street. The street is not accessible to automobiles due to gates, but there's also a parking area of most of what the street right-of-way is right now. Adjacent properties are actually, can be accessed by adjoining streets. And most of the properties are on college property, so that would be fine. Consulted with the utility departments and the Miami Township Fire Department. The fire department is concerned about maintaining fire access to buildings located along the streets. That access can be maintained. They have no issues with the proposed vacation. Water and electric, there are utility lines that are present under the street and access would need to be maintained. Let me see if I can pull up a brief kind of overview of what this area looks like. Probably just use the old master plan. So this area, right where the cursor is, is North College. And the utility lines actually run in a diagonal line from the south end of North College Street up to the north end of North College and Cory, right here. So it's a long diagonal line that runs down from the south to the north, right there. And actually, it's a sewer line that does that. And those, those maintenance, those utilities will need to be maintained access to those, those utilities. For transportation needs, although not identified as a possible automobile connector, the street can be utilized as a pedestrian and bicycle connection between the village, the school, and Little Miami Trail. The applicant has indicated that they intend to convert the street into a brick pedestrian and bicycle pathway. The plan was presented as part of the Antioch Master Plan and also the Antioch Equavillage Sharette in March 2015. As for the validity of the applicant's reasons for requesting vacation, the applicant stated they intend to reutilize the vacated right-of-way as a brick walking and biking path that benefits students. The sharette, this path is prominently displayed as connected, as a connectivity feature for future site development. Some aspects of the plan show development possibly encroaching into the middle section of the vacated right-of-way. These areas must be developed in a way to either relocate or avoid the existing utilities. And I can also show you that. And I can also show you that as well, it's in my reports. So. Come on. That's too far. Here it is, right there. So this is the sharette plans for the Eco Village from March for North College. And it shows buildings that would protrude into the existing right of way. There are these kind of decor, these entryway sections of building that would frame the brick connector path as it goes east along the, the right of way. So our current utility lines are right here. So if this is developed and this element is included in there, these utility lines would have to be relocated in order to allow the building to move forward. So that was a concern that was brought up by utility departments. As far as general citizen reaction to the proposed vacation, village offices have not received any comments with the proposed vacation. Staff notified adjacent property owners within 100 feet of the alley vacation area, the street vacation area, sent notice to Yellow Springs News for three weeks. The agenda item was announced as the past two village council meetings. And we did notify all of the adjacent property owners by mail and also beyond the scope of the requirements in the code. So after looking at all of this stuff and consulting with our utility departments, their biggest concern is maintaining access to the existing utilities. They need to see some clarity as how the area is going to be repaired between the utility departments and the college. Currently, the village utility departments can only replace, if there's a main break and they come in and fix it, they replace with gravel and then they will not be able to replace with the like material, they use brick. So that is something that needs to be worked out between the village and the school. However, seeing all that stuff, staff does recommend that the planning commission recommend that village council approve this right of way vacation with the conditions as follows, and that is to maintain the utility easement for existing utility access and to relocate the utilities, to have the applicant relocate utilities if at some point in the future they do put a building along the vacated right of way where the utilities would be located. And also that they work with our utility departments to, on a, on an agreement for restoration of utility maintenance when that does arise, so there's no misunderstanding between both entities. Any questions?
Any questions for John? Reggie, do you want to add to that?
Sure. So some of the same reasons for vacating Herman apply to this vacation as well. But again, it's, we're trying to create a campus that is bike and pedestrian friendly. Having a street there, ever having a street there where cars can travel would be counter to that. It would also be a public safety risk with, as we grow and as we see more students on campus. We want to keep, you know, parking and, and cars all on the perimeter of the campus. We'd like to build this brick pathway. As you can see, it's, you know, aesthetically pleasing. This is, of course, the pathway we started. If you want to pass that around. In front of Coral, that's going to eventually run from Livermore over to Corey. This is what it looks like now with the asphalt. So just envision the same type of brick pathway going across, but it really helped beautify the campus. Brick pavers are also, you know, pervious and it helps us manage our stormwater as well. So it has environmental benefits. And as John mentioned, you know, with, with the development of the Antioch Village and our future plans, again, trying to honor these 25 feet setbacks makes it more difficult. We'd like to have more options, such as he's displaying there with the buildings that do encroach the, the right of way. And if and when that development ever took place, we, yeah, we would then work out relocating those utilities. In the short run, again, of course, the village would maintain an easement there so that they can get out the storm and sewer and water that's running through there. And in fact, you're, you're getting ready to rip all that up, to put that new 10-inch main from Livermore to Corey. And, you know, the, the idea of doing pavers instead of black topping it back is actually going to save the village money. When I talked to Johnny and the contractors he's working with, it, it would make more sense to us that after you get the 10-inch line installed, to just put back the compacted gravel, which is the bed for the brick pavers, and save the cost of repaving it with blacktop all the way. So yeah, that's really it. Those are the reasons and I, I think it makes sense.
Okay. Any questions for, for Reggie?
Reggie, with the, the building that's present, presently there, the fire department, I don't know if that building is vacant or if it's in use, but in case of a fire.
Are we talking about the student union?
No, this, this building right here.
Oh, that's Pennell House. So Pennell, where is Pennell on there? Help me out, John.
It looks like it kind of.
That's Pennell, that's Weston.
Oh, gosh, yeah.
That's Weston.
That's one?
That's Pennell.
That's Pennell, right.
And then that's Weston.
So Weston, what's the street there? Is it Limestone? What's the street that comes up to Weston?
Well, see, there's President, but.
President.
That's President, okay. There's President again.
Yeah, President does not reach, reach that building, so I'm.
President reaches Weston, but it would not reach Pennell.
Right.
Now, Pennell is somewhat isolated. I guess the thing we could do there is on that, that we'd have to make the, the brick paver strong enough to, you know, hold a fire truck if it crossed it.
Well, the, the pavers would have to be, unless you can enter from the back. In the future plans, the, the pavers would have to be strong enough to, to hold fire equipment.
Yes, yeah.
How would you dissuade cars and let fire equipment through there? Like, are, if, if you're going to maintain access for fire equipment, which I would think that you would want to do anyway, even if we didn't stipulate it? What, I mean, are those like little things that come out of the ground there in that drawing to dissuade cars from going through there?
Yeah, they're showing posts there. You can get removable ballards.
Right.
So that's probably what we would do.
I've got a question for John.
Sure.
As I walk through, I, I come at three or four, they look like drainage ditches?
Yes.
Is that our responsibility?
That's our, that's our storm sewer, yeah.
Okay, so. If they put pavers in, would they have to be?
They had to slope it forward.
See, I'm, I'm, I'm wondering if, if the storm sewer was there to get the water from, was it limestone down to Corey? Or was it, did we have other water issues while we, we, we put drains down the middle there?
And I'm not sure exactly what the historical concerns were for installing the drain there, but it, I read it by Jason and he said it is his drain, so.
And that extends up North College?
And that's, that's the one that goes diagonal that I was talking about. That goes from the south part of North Cal, East North College to the north part.
All the way to Corey, right?
To Corey, yes.
Okay, any more questions? If not, we'll open the public hearing. Okay, so we'll open the public hearing. If anyone has any comments they'd like to make publicly about this matter, identify yourself, step up the microphone and say your views.
And Paul Abendraff. As a firefighter, I'd like to add another dimension to this, and that is height. The fire trucks are 11 and a half feet tall. So because it is going to be a walkway, people tend to not worry about the, the clearance above. And if it's going to be used for fire engines in an emergency, the trucks will have to get under the 11 and a half foot height. Thank you.
Thanks, Paul. Anyone else?
Mike Kelly. My only, my biggest concern along with the Herman Street vacation is that right now, the village has options. They have flexibility to add utilities or to access utilities. This is a reducing of options. And I, I know that there's a master plan, but to me, if you make any approval of either of these vacations, it should be very specific, the way that Jerry mentioned, so that, you know, no offense to Reggie, he might be gone in two years and he's saying, we're going to do it this way, but if there's nothing tied into the approval, I hope you're not, but, I mean, if there's nothing tied into the approval, then, you know, those gates on Herman Street could keep out pedestrians. Right now, we have access because it is a right of way. Unless there's something specific in your approval that says there will be this and it's tied into that, then it won't happen. I mean, regimes change at the college. I mean, it's, it's gone through lots of changes over the years and, and, you know, this has always been working. I'm not, I understand there, there are bigger, better plans and I'm not against those plans. I'm just afraid that unless we're very specific on what is approved, then they can come back eight months later and unless you follow up or they can change some little facet that could create problems for the utilities or the fire department. So that's my only concern.
Thanks. Anyone else? There's no more comment, we'll close the public hearing. Any more discussion here?
Yeah, I have one from a, from a village standpoint. If we were to approve both, I'm concerned that for safety reasons and so forth, we have, have no access to Corey Street. That, that, that does kind of bother me in terms of the routes that future emergency vehicles may have to take to, you know, either they come down Xenia Avenue or they go all the way up to Corey Street to Allen Street. And, you know, I'm, I'm just concerned with the, the overall future plans of the, of the college not, not having at least one access street that, that goes all the way through to Corey. Years ago, when I first moved, there was somewhat access because you could, you could get to the old Antioch Inn and be able to drive the, the whole way. I'm dating myself now. But now I'm thinking about the, the future and, and how that area could become populated. There's just, you know, granted, the fire department may move eventually, but the way it is now, it's, it's still, either for, for fire or police emergencies, you have to go around it all.
And the proposal for the walkway, would that satisfy your concerns?
It, it would have to be sturdy the whole way through and, and, you know, the, granted, you can put posts in the center to keep vehicles out, but in emergencies, and Paul, correct me if I'm wrong, sometimes time is on the essence. You have to stop and lift up posts and go and lift up posts, you know. Some may say it's an unnecessary hazard.
Just a thought too on that point that, you know, up to Pennell House, on, it could be, it can be done on the way to support vehicles and then ballards pass that point so that there's always access for the fire department. So we don't, you know, on that Corey Street side. I mean, there, there are options, I think we can work them out.
Okay. Well. Rose, what are your thoughts? We'll just put you on the spot, we'll go down the line here.
I'd like, I like the three stipulation, conditions that are in the staff recommendation. I would like to see some sort of condition on allowing emergency vehicles through there, even if it is only to Weston, you know, up to Weston.
I, I agree with what Rose said. I, I think, I think the stipulations that staff have made, the three, and then the walkway, emergency vehicles having access to that.
Okay. I bet I think I'm on the same boat. Jerry, do you have anything else?
Yeah, I, I, like I say, I'm, again, I'm just uncomfortable with giving up our, our access straight across.
I mean, I think that if we're going to suggest that, if, if we're going to stipulate that there's access for emergency equipment, we just make it for the entire length?
Well, that's what I'm, I would say. It would have to be for the, for the entire length. See, in, in that way, if the college had future plans for other, other type development further out, access would be there. And my, my other, and again, I, I want it to be very specific in terms of if we had to, to move, or if the sewer, I guess it's a sewer line? If it had to be moved, you know, that's, that's not an easy task. So, you know, be real specific on.
Well, if, if they had to, if they were to propose a building over the easement that the village controlled, they would need to come back, right? And modify that easement and the utilities.
Well, see, that's, that's what I'm wondering, if it was vacated.
If they're not going to build over the easement, it's just a, they're proposing a building over the right of way, but not the easement.
Well, but we talk about having to, to move a utility. Is that utility a sewer line that we're talking about may have to be moved in the future?
Depending on where this comes out.
I'm not sure why, but again, and, and if we built buildings like that in that area, we're going to, there, there's going to be digging going on anyway. So it probably would not be a huge factor to reroute at that time. But I really don't know, I don't see why we have to move.
Well, see, then, then, then I want that spelled out because like we say, you don't see it and apparently some of our, our staff sees it, so then that should be.
It's interesting to know the reasoning behind why we would have to move those underground lines that exist.
Well, if we have to access, if the underground right of line is here and we need to have five being each side, then we need to have that this moved to at least the central, the center line of of the the pathway. That way, we can maintain the access. If some, if there was to be a break in this vicinity, we could get it, we can get to it.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, having as a condition, if and when we did build something like that, of course, we'd agree to that, but I imagine we would build in a manner that we wouldn't impact those lines and have to move, you know, this is all conceptual, I mean.
Right.
When you come right down to the civil engineering of it, we could.
We'd move the building.
Yeah, we'd remove the building.
Well, I don't think you can build a permanent structure on top of the easement anyway. So they would have to come back to.
Well, they kind of did it where the wellness center was.
That's true.
Well, we'd have the opportunity, the commission and council would have the opportunity here to design the easement in such a way that all of those eventualities can be considered and addressed.
Okay.
So we would design the easements to address the eventuality that there's a possibility that this sewer line might need to be relocated and that the applicant would be responsible for relocating that if it's at that time that they decided to build something there.
Yeah, that's number, and then number two would be that, you know, if for some reason we had to dig up the storm drain, that's their understanding that it would go back as gravel and they would be responsible for redoing papers if they so decided.
Yeah, I I made a note, it said mutually agreeable repair plan prior to approval by council. As a condition. I mean, that's a month away, so you can work with the utility guys. Okay, so if we're gonna try to craft something here, are we looking at trying to approve this with conditions tonight?
Yes, and if you, it seems like you've honed the specific conditions down.
Yeah, okay. Okay, so what those conditions are, do we need to get some language, Judy?
I have some of them right now, I'm just trying to write them all out. One is that we would design the, we would design the utility easement to maintain existing access and also possible future relocation access. And then the applicant would be responsible for relocating lines if construction of the building were to occur on site. The other one is that the applicant would be responsible, would maintain access for emergency vehicles. I also added that they would construct any future improvement pathways in a manner that would support the the weight of a vehicle, a fire truck.
Weight and height.
Weight and height, yeah.
Can we make it a a condition that to build on the easement, they would have to come back to council, not just move the the utilities? That just seems sort of unwieldy.
Well, if we wouldn't build on the easement, again, that would be a condition you can't build on the easement.
So if you can't build on the easement, why would they need to move the utility lines? The utility lines are underneath.
They would have to come back and apply for movement.
So that shouldn't, is the, is that relevant to a condition for this?
I don't know that it is, I mean, you.
Talking about moving them, and they just, they're not allowed to build on the easement?
They wouldn't be allowed to build on the easement, but as it was presented in the charrettes, there was a very, there was a very specific focus on making this part of the campus a gateway. So having these, this kind of entrance treatments. Although this proposal might not be the exact outcome of that, there will be some element that we need to be prepared and plan for when that arises.
So should they have to come to us or are we making an agreement with them right now? Or when council approves it, that they can, that they just need to move the water line, the the utilities and therefore the easement moves?
No.
No.
I think we're, I think we might be.
I'm sorry.
No, not at all, there's two, you know, there's two considerations here. There's the easement, obviously, the village is gonna maintain an easement for access, utility access and maintenance and repair. But also, what staff has suggested in the in the staff report is that there'll be an agreement entered into between the parties. And that agreement could spell out a lot of the discussion that you're having here. It wouldn't necessarily be built into an easement.
Okay.
It would be built into an agreement between the parties.
And that could include the payment repair plan and.
It could, sure.
Yeah, okay.
And you can make the the agreement a condition that would go to council.
Right. Yeah, because that needs to be worked out before any approval by council.
That's correct.
So I have a question about that. You've got, I think, Rose, you're addressing that second bullet point.
Yeah.
As some matter of confusion. If the first bullet point's changed to maintain the utility access easement, I'm sorry, main the utility easement, and you take out the second bullet point, is Antioch still gonna be able to do what they desire with regard to this vacation? But you're not opening the door at all. You're simply leaving it that that utility access is maintained, which would force them to return if in fact they wanted to.
Should we look in?
Correct. If they wanted to build over.
They would have to return, right?
Right, because you just don't open the door with that second bullet point. I'm not asking.
So simply leave that point out.
Okay.
And change your language to maintain the utility easement, so you're not.
The existing utility easement. Okay.
Can I ask one brief question?
Sure.
If you vacate the right-of-way, right now, as a villager, I'm allowed to walk through there. If you vacate the right-of-way, does that mean I can no longer walk through there? I mean, I'm not, no offense, again, to Reggie.
You're always welcome on campus.
Well, I know, that's what you say, but I mean, I'm just saying, if you vacate the right-of-way, right now, I can walk through there. If Reggie's gone or somebody else is there and you vacated the right-of-way, they can put a fence up and say, "Public can't come in." Is that, that's my question.
They could.
Right.
The same with Herman, that that was my.
Right.
One of my two concerns, I guess. Like, right now, we have an access because it's, we're village resident, or anybody, I guess, because there's a right-of-way, but if the right-of-way's gone.
Yeah, it's a public right-of-way now.
Unless I'm working on the utilities and I'm working on the utilities, I can't go there. I mean, I know Reggie says I can't.
Well, I think the history of the college shows that, you know, the campus has always been a welcoming campus.
Yeah, I don't expect it to change at all, but like I said, unless it's spelled out, somebody else can come in and say, you know, "We're not gonna allow that anymore," or "The access is way over here now," or something.
So could we add a condition that there's a walking, you know, that a public walking path? Is that legal?
Well, I have a question then for John. Is it, is it currently a public access or is it simply a utility access? Because you may be adding something that didn't exist in the first place if it's.
The street is, it's a, it's a closed right-of-way, but it's still accessible for the public.
Okay.
Yeah, that's what I was asking, if they're both right-of-ways, then if all of a sudden they're gone, you know, unless it's stipulated or specified, then the college could, that's what I'm asking. I'm not thinking they're gonna be, they're doing a little.
And we do have the documentation from the 1968 Planning Commission meeting that does go into that detail. I just wanted to read that.
Is that applicable to this issue?
It was just to. For closing the street.
Okay.
Okay, so now, right now, we have three conditions. Maintaining the easement. Agreeing with respect to restoration. And the third one is the emergency vehicle access to the entire length.
And and you then also have to strengthen the, whatever the, you make the walkway out of so that it will also hold and that the height will be maintained. That was very inarticulate, but I'm sure that, John, that's.
So the question is, do we wanna talk about that issue as a as a condition?
About main.
About maintaining public access. Because what we're saying essentially is that it becomes private property with this recommendation. We recommend to council essentially.
You wanna put a condition on there that we have to maintain public access? That's fine to put on there too. I mean, it's intended.
Right, it's a walkway.
To welcome our community on the campus, so.
You could, you could just throw that in that first bullet point if you say you maintain the utility easement for existing utility and public access.
Yep.
Yeah.
That would make me very happy.
Great.
And then we would build it into the agreement between the parties. And just to clarify, that's for pedestrian access.
Right, yes, not vehicles.
Pedestrian and bicycle access.
Pedestrian and bicycle.
Or non-automobile access, maybe, if you wanna add segways and scooters or.
Non-motorized public access?
Segways and.
Non-motorized public access, yeah.
Although, where do you draw the line on electric bikes?
Golf carts.
Golf carts.
Who's who's the cop that's gonna steal them? Could he?
I don't know.
Let's say non-motorized.
I like non-motorized vehicles.
You give that?
That that one needs a golf cart. And and they use golf carts.
Are people using it right now for golf?
No, I mean, their maintenance folks use use golf carts.
But you're only stipulating for the public.
Right, yeah.
I I just think we're going a little too far myself.
Okay.
In that part, because, you know, we just don't know what the future's gonna be in terms of.
So you're saying just leave it as public access?
Public access.
Period.
Period, and then if the issue comes up later, you know, I just.
Well, I, I, what I did very least, I wanna keep cars off our campus.
We wanna keep cars off, but, you know, do you wanna keep a golf cart off for handicapped players or?
Not necessarily an electric one. And we have, we have public, our our public comes on campus with electric golf carts. And then comes the gasoline tire.
Power, no, right.
Still an electric motor.
Counter.
Motorized.
Well, I think what we do is just say, "Public access." If it's an issue, then we'll address it. I mean, otherwise, you start, somebody cares and you go a eight paragraph.
Put up the restriction versus us, but.
Okay, do you wanna, you wanna read those one last time?
This is, this is what I have. I have maintain the easement for utility, public access. I have reached an agreement on utility repair and maintenance. I have maintain access for fire emergency vehicles. I have strengthen access path to support emergency vehicles and maintain the height clearance for those emergency vehicles.
Okay. So if we're all in agreement with that, do we have a motion to approve?
I will move approval.
With the follow, with those conditions?
Yes, with those conditions.
Seven.
Judy, you wanna call the roll?
Sims?
Yes.
Stiles?
Yes.
Pelzow?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes. Okay. And you get to listen to this whole thing again.
Yeah. And I've like, I never heard it before.
All right, thanks. The last item we have on our agenda is a text amendment that John would like to discuss with us.
Yes, it's an application for, application number 159006. It's actually made by the village of Yellow Springs. It's a text amendment for the fee schedule. The village planning staff has been working on revising the permit fee schedule for zoning and subdivision permits. The last time the schedule was revised was in 1993, which is 22 years ago. Since then, the code has been moved from section 11 of this code of ordinances. And I actually, just looking back, I should have included that resolution. It cites section 11 heavily, the ordinance does, which doesn't exist anymore. It's now section 12. And then we updated our section, our zoning code in 2013. So even if those sections were changed, it would still not refer to the correct parts of the ordinance. That being said, we looked at, we embarked on looking at a new fee schedule for our permits. We took into account the fee structures for different municipalities in the area, as well as Williamsburg and in Bellevue, Kentucky, where I used to work. And based though, that our fee schedule on information, as well as the amount of time and and money that is spent in doing some certain applications, such as the planning commission. Obviously, cost for mail has increased, cost for advertising, and the newspaper has increased along with the hourly cost for administrative staff. Requirements for the, for an update in the zoning code is spelled out in section 1280.02A of the village co-ordinances. These are, these are basically guidelines and not all of these may apply to a text amendment. One is clarifying the intent of the code, two is correcting an error in the code, three is addressing change to state legislation, recent case law or opinions of the attorney general of state Ohio, four, if it affects the implementation of the Yellow Springs conference plan and division, Yellow Springs, Miami Town should document, five, if promotes compliance with change in other country, federal, counties, et cetera, state or federal regulations, six, in the event of the amendment, would add a use of district that would be fully consistent with the purpose of the district and the character of the range of uses provided within the district, seven, that would not create incompatible land uses within a zoning district, eight, be supported by the findings of reports, studies and other documentation on functional requirements, contemporary building practices, environmental requirements and similar technical items, nine, if applicable, be consistent with the village's ability to provide adequate public facilities and services, and 10, be consistent with the village's desire for remote public health, safety, convenience, comfort, prosperity and general welfare of the community. The planning commission can make a recommendation to approve, deny or have a conditional approval to the village council regarding the text amendment request. Sorry, that's a typo. Staff has found that the proposed amendment would clarify the adopted zoning ordinance because it eliminates a lot of inconsistencies with the old fee structure, as well as better accounts for present day pricing and at-cost requirements or at-cost things that the, that staff would conduct. So just looking at the document here, and the fees, actually, I'm only, they're only being raised in general, $5. Right now, the the zoning permit fee is $10. The construct, the permit fee for new construction does go up a little bit more. Kind of, it goes more into more detail about multifamily and commercial construction. So you would have $3 to $5 flat fee plus $10 per residential unit over four or every 1,000 square feet over 5,000 square feet for commercial spaces. We changed the the regulation, the the fees for permits for signs. The present regulation says it's $10 per, for the first, for one sign, that's 50 square feet, and then an extra like $5 for additional square feet. For the, from my experience, it doesn't really affect whether, the review does not affect whether or not the the sign's bigger or smaller for the most part. It does, however, affect if you have multiple signs. So we made it a per sign fee instead of a size-based fee schedule. Changing use permit goes up $5. Plan unit development goes up from, from, I think, $75 to $150. The final plan application is $75. A level B plan review, which is a review that, a site plan review that would go to planning commission for approval, such as the hotel, is now going to be a $100 flat fee plus a $500 refundable deposit. And this is a deposit that we actually use in Bellevue. It worked pretty well. It covers engineering and other outside service costs and the balance is returned to the applicant after the plan is reviewed. If so, they pay for the first $500 for the, let's say, engineering and then we would eat the rest, we would, we would have the rest of the cost. If it goes over 500, if it stays under 500, we don't use it, we return it to the applicant. So that helps them out a little bit. Reapplications are. Reapplications are $50, they were, they were actually not even in the old, the old documents. Conditioning uses have gone from $35 to $100, and that's a reflection of staff time commitments, plus the raise in, in stamp prices and, and notifications in the newspaper. Lot divisions have gone up, have gone up a little bit, and there's now a $15 per lot. Add to that, there used to be, I think, a flat fee. MAP and text amendments have gone up, I think they're doubled in price. Applications to the Board of Zoning Appeals have increased from $35 to $100. The zoning certificate went from 10 to 15. Appeals were, were raised a little bit, and if you win your appeal, you get part of it back. So you get $30 to refund it if it's affirmed. And then, let's see what else. Right-of-way vacation requests have gone up from $25 to $50, and $100 if no petition is included. There's apparently language in section 1224.03, that if you have a petition from adjacent property owners for the right-of-way vacation, that it actually goes down. And then I added an, a line that was not included in the fee schedule for, if somebody starts work on a project, provide a permit, that there's a 50% of fine attached to that permit when they do come in and get a permit. So if you build a fence, it's 720, 750 more, up of 15. So, that's just a basic overview of those. And it, the text amendment basically would adjust section 1222.04, covering fees. Currently, the language says, the resolution, if fee schedule adopted by a resolution of the village council, then ends. And then it would just add and contain in appendix A of this code, and then it would add a section at the end of the code, which would be appendix A, which would contain the fee schedule information for the zoning code. So based on looking at other zoning, at other zoning code permit fees, and looking at this, it's actually a modest increase from other places. Xenia has pretty, pretty, a lot higher fees. One of the, I looked at a municipality in Clarendon County, I'm blanking on the name of it right now, but their, their fees were a lot higher than this. So, we're actually coming in on the low end of present day fee schedules. So, with that, I would make a recommendation to planning commission to send a vote, a vote of approval to village council regarding these text amendments. Do you have any questions?
John, I have one question.
Sure.
And that's on G. Wouldn't it be better that a fine without a permit would be an additional 50% of the cost of the permit? I think that's what you're saying, right?
Yes, it's an additional.
It's an additional 50% of the cost.
Any other questions for John?
Yeah, I don't see replat in here. Is that in some other part of the zoning books?
Yeah, replat is actually in the subdivision regulations.
Okay.
For their, their fees. Some of these, some of the fees are in the subdivision regulations, so replat was one of those.
Okay. Any other questions for John?
I mean.
Did, I, I, I'm sorry. Under the fence and accessory structure permit?
Mm-hmm.
Was there reasoning for those to be the same, or?
Accessory structures, including, include fences, sheds, decks, garages, they're all pretty.
Okay.
Straightforward structures. It's when you start to get into the new construction housing, that it gets more complicated, and you need to do some more intense site, site plan review.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, this again is a public hearing, so we're going to open up the floor for any comments or questions from anyone here. Again, step forward, address the microphone, and identify yourself. All right. So there's no comments. If that is the case, we'll close the public hearing. Do we have any more discussion here? Any more questions for John?
No.
Do we want to entertain a motion to send this to council with our recommendation that they approve these, these increases?
So move, just what you said? So, I, I move that we, we send to council appendix A, the updated fee schedule.
Can I make one suggestion, I guess? And that would be, in your motion, that you include the amendment that you, the, the change text for G.
With the change text for G.
Right.
Second. I'm coming.
Okay.
Would you have to call the?
Pelzow?
Yes.
Stiles?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes. All right. I mean, it's only 20 years, that's pretty.
And I, and I only really moved you up to Bellevue, which was 2003, so, 10 years.
Okay, I think the last item on our agenda is the planner's report.
So I didn't have a chance to really get this in your packet, but I worked on it over the weekend. And I have some ideas for some future text amendments for the zoning regulations that I want you guys to consider in a future meeting. One would be swimming pool regulations. And I am not sure if these got swept away when the zoning codes were written, or if we just never really had them, but we need them, because we need to have guidelines for making sure that kids and other people are safe around swimming, bodies of water and swimming pools, or one of them. So, regulations that I'm proposing would basically have pools be set back at least three feet from the side and rear yard. They'd be only allowed in the rear yard, be considered accessory structure. They have to be completely enclosed by a fence of at least four feet in height, that has, the access gate has to be self-closing, self-latching. And if you have a deck around your fence, then that requirement is waived because your deck accessed the fence. So that would be a recommendation that I would have the planning commission consider at the May meeting. The second one would be the zoning lot definition. And this is something I brought up back in January, where property owners who ha, own multiple parcels, but have like a house sitting on a bunch of lot lines, would be able to file a document with the zoning office, saying that these parcels should be considered a single lots. And then we would have that on record, so it would eliminate the need for someone to come in and seek a variance for a lot line that their building is built over, and they need to build an addition or something. So it would require some certification with the, with the village's planning office, and then it would just be an amendment and definition of the zoning code. The third item is regulations for sidewalk displays, outdoor dining, and sandwich board signs on the right-of-way in B1 zoning district. And this amendment would be based on guidelines, basically to balance the interests of business owners, as well as the need to keep the right-of, the pedestrian right-of-ways, the sidewalks clear for access. And that would be that outdoor display items are items that are currently for sale at the retail establishment, so it would be something that you're actually selling, be on the street. They would only be permitted in the sidewalk during business hours and up to about half hour after the business closes, so it would give them time to bring that stuff in. And that would be for outdoor dining tables as well. This one, no alcohol is permitted to be served in the right-of-way, just a clarification that we don't allow, it's just regulations, state regulations, that we cannot allow the serving of right-of, of alcohol on the right-of-way. And then, outdoor displays and dining, outdoor dining are only permitted to be within the immediate front of the building location. So it would be the immediate frontage, you wouldn't be able to have a, a business that would just be able to put their tables or their stuff out in front of their neighbor's frontage. And then, at all times, a minimum width of five feet must be maintained on the sidewalk for the passage of pedestrians. That would, it would ensure that we have at least five feet, which is the minimum for ADA handicap wheelchair access. So that is one thing I'm recommending to you, to you guys in, in May. And then finally, setbacks for driveways, residential driveways, we just don't have them, and we have, we've had a couple of instances where there's been some questions concerning where driveways are placed. So I'm recommending that we create, we draft language that requires driveways be at least one foot from the side property lines, and that they should be sloped away to divert runoff from adjacent properties. So you wouldn't be, your driveway wouldn't be causing your neighbor's garage to flood. So do you guys have any comments on that section of my staff report?
Just a one, will you talk about the outdoor display?
Mm-hmm.
Outdoor dining only permitted in the immediate front of the business location?
Yeah, it would be the, the, if the bills, if the business is 30, is a, is in a storefront that's 30 feet wide, they would have that 30 feet in front of their business. They wouldn't be able to go beyond that.
But it doesn't restrict the back?
No.
Okay.
No, this is only concerning outs, outdoor dining and outdoor displays that are on the street.
On the street side, okay.
Any other questions on that part? The second one is that, is regarding code enforcement. I'm beginning the process of enforcing the many village codes, zoning code included, as well as some property maintenance codes that I found in the code ordinances. And while I would prefer to be diplomatic, to diplomatic resolve all issues face-to-face with onsite meetings, it is not always a very practical thing to do. So, part of being in the conversation typically is to send a violation letter, and then that usually triggers a phone call, sometimes angry, most times angry, where then we would have a discussion and, and work on resolving the code violation from there. So I went through the zoning code, and the zoning code actually outlines the process for code enforcement. As, is, is outlined briefly below, I added my own things in there as well. And I'll tell you where I've kind of added an extra layer to kind of help, help out people who are, are in violation. The first one is that, this is not in the code, is that I'm going to send an initial warning letter, basically, saying I, I will take a picture of whatever's wrong with their property, and I will say, "You're in violation of section yada, yada, yada of yada, yada code." And I'll cite, I'll cite that, that specific code, and I will give them ways to remedy the code violation. And I'll give my contact information so they can call me or email me, and I'll give them three days to correct that violation. If that does not trigger a negotiation, where then, for example, if somebody gets a letter, they usually call me up, and I'm just like, okay, I'm pretty flexible working with people. If you say, "Give me 10 days, I'll fix this," then I'm going to hold you to the 10 days. If there's other things, you know, we'll, we try to work that out. If I don't hear anything back from somebody, or if it's been, or three days have elapsed and nothing has happened, then I will send the official notice, which has to be sent, according to the code, certified mail or hand-delivered. And it will have an updated picture of the violation with a, a date stamp, and a date stamp is very key to, to successful code enforcement. It'll repeat the same text of the, the code that has been violated. It'll include information about a possible fine, penalty from the village, which is $100. It would be a three-day window again, which is part of the process in the zoning ordinance. And we'll also talk about the availability of village mediation. Now, one thing I forgot to include is that the village mediation is not in the initial warning letter. However, that is something that will be discussed over the phone if that, if it's determined that we need to go to mediation. In my experience with code enforcement, typically, things that usually get to the citation process before they actually go to mediation. But mediation is usually a step we could do before we go to court with, for a code violation, because they tend to be more successful than having a judge look at it. If that does not generate a response or fix the problem, then we will send a citation out for the $100. And then, within 20 days of that, if it's not resolved, according to the code, we have to refer to a municipal prosecutor, which would be municipal court in Xenia. And, yeah. I have never had a code complaint, complaint, I'm not going to board here, go to court, so, in my eight and a half, nine years now of working in zoning. So I, I hope that we can do code enforcement diplomatically and, and get these issues resolved in a, in a copacetic and harmonious fashion.
And is that last point, is that in the current code?
Yes.
Okay, so it's already there.
I actually had a, to get some clarification on, on that, to find out what that meant. So, yes. I did bring a sample letter, I could show you guys, this would be like the initial warning, and it's pretty straightforward. And I, I don't try to hide any information when I send these out, and. Is, are there any questions regarding that?
I just wondered, and this is just a minor thing. In that initial discussion, when you send the warning letter, and they have the 30 days to correct it, and I don't know what, but if it's something, let's say that is somewhat weather-related or something, so, let's say that they really couldn't correct it for 90 days. Could they negotiate that with you?
Yeah.
That, okay, well, I can take care of it, but it's going to take me like, at least 70, because I have to wait till it's warm weather or something like that.
Sure, yeah. Like I, like I said, usually, the letter is not to be threatening that we're going to come down.
Sure.
Hard on somebody, it's, say, like, we need to have a conversation about resolving this. And typically, a lot of our, our codes that are outside of the zoning code pertain more to life safety and those types of things. And, for example, abandoned buildings and so forth, and, and making sure that buildings are boarded up correctly, and that, that you can't access them, because sometimes kids, you know, want to go in and explore, and the abandoned building might not be structurally safe, so you really don't want them to be in something that could be a fire or a collapse, and, and a danger of collapse. So, those are the issues I'm, I'm looking to address, for the most part.
Okay.
So, should I move on, or do you?
Yeah, why don't you go ahead and just move on and.
And then the finally, I'm, I'm starting to work on permit form revisions. I'm going to break, up, I'm basically breaking up the general permit a little bit. General permit right now, the zoning permit, is basically a blanket permit that has a lot of information that you probably would need to fill out if you were building a house or a new building, but not really need to if you're going to build a shed or something. So, I want to improve the, split it off and improve the new construction part of it, so it's clearer for, not only on a zoning standpoint, but also, that permit also includes sign-offs and fees for tapping into utilities. So we have more of a clarity about what requirements the village has for utility taps, and what, what's required to be built out of that. So, kind of separating that out a little bit. The general permit will get a, mostly a graphical redesign. It's mostly the same information, just a little more clear on what type of accessory structure or general permit that you would be filling out, so there'd be checkboxes, say like, checking off a shed, because I'm building a shed. And then, fence permit will actually have a, a diagram on it, so you can draw where your fence is, and say it's an rear yard fence, or where your streets are. So, this helps visually, it helps, it helps me with finding where everything's going to go, and being able to give them clear guidance. And it also helps records to show that we have, we know exactly where the fence is going to go, because I drew it. And then finally, pool permits, and this will just have regulations that we, hopefully will pass in the future about pools. So it's kind of a little ahead, actually, but when we do get, have permit, pool, swimming pool regulations, that information will be on that permit. And there are other permits I have not yet been able to look at that, I haven't, that are, I haven't yet redesigned, but I might in the future. So, that's basically where we're at right now.
So are all these forms available online?
The old forms are. The old forms are, I have not designed the new forms yet.
Okay.
So, that's just something that I'm working on, that I just want to keep up to date, that we're trying to make it easier for people to do stuff in the village, and, and get those permits in and out as fast as we can.
Will we have to approve those permit, the new draft of the forms?
Technically, yes.
Okay.
So I will, I will bring them to you guys.
And you're going to be coming back with the text amendments?
Yeah, so if you guys feel that you need to initiate that as a zoning action, part is pursuant to the section of the zoning code pertaining to text amendments, then you would basically make a motion that these would be presented in the next meeting, the May meeting, and we have to give 20-day notice.
I mean, is that a sufficient amount of time for you?
The outline is basically what the text amendment is going to be. The reason why I provided it is that, if you guys have any suggestions for changes, I could add that into my drafting of the amendments. It could be the May or, or June council meeting, too, if you.
Is there anything looming for next month that you are aware of?
I do have to give a report about sidewalks to council. Other than that.
But nothing for?
Nothing for the commission. Well, we have the right-of-way for. That's true.
I mean, I think we got to wait till June.
Okay.
If that makes sense to everybody else.
Sure, that's fine.
And in the meantime, I mean, mainly be a part, because it's all kind of brand-new here, we might believe, I may have to time to consider it, and.
Sure.
I'm not quite sure why swimming pools were omitted from the rewrite.
I'm not sure either.
I'm sure they weren't in the original, in the old one. But, regardless.
So do we need a motion regarding this, that we would like something in June?
No.
I don't think so.
Sure.
Yeah.
Okay.
But if it's ready in June, you can probably tell us next month if you think it's, you're comfortable with advertising it and, and doing the formal review.
Okay.
And hearing.
I'll do that.
And then, at that point, we'd probably get a resolution to put it on the agenda for the next week, next month rather.
Sounds good.
Okay. Is there anything else we need to do for agenda planning? It sounds like you've already got your item, John, so. Well, if that's the case, do we have a motion to adjourn? Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?